All right, it is 7:01 on December 30th. Welcome to the Town of Sherwin's Select Board Meeting. I will now call this meeting to order and ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the agenda.
Good evening. So after I read the agenda, the board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. And we have a public comment from Brian Connolly at Library Trustees. And then item number one is the consent agenda, which is the Town Administration Paywall Warren. And next scheduled Select Board Meetings of January 13th, 2022, January 27th, 2022, February 10th, 2022, and February 24th, 2022. Item number two is consideration of EV charging station fees with Michael Lesser from the Energy and Sustainability Committee and Gino Carlucci, the Town Planner. Item number three is a consideration of acceptance of a complete street grant for round two, and that will be presented by Gino Carlucci, the Town Planner. We then have a consideration of a couple of appointments. There's the Agricultural Commission, Richard Robertson, who is an associate member currently and is asking to be voted to a full voting member to expire on June 15th, 2024. Then the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Commission will be Melissa Bowman for a term to expire on June 15th, 2024. And then the Sherwin Cultural Council, Kathy Harrigan, for a term to expire on June 15th, 2024. We also have a new Eagle Scout proclamation for Owen Wymer. And number five is the consideration of Town Meeting Draft Warren Article Checklist. Number six is consideration of routine business Select Board Town Administrator. And then we will go into Executive Session, which will be item number one, and it's for contract negotiations with non-bargaining employee pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 2, and 7, in Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM 449 Mass. 444 207 DPW Director. Item number two is meeting with Town Council in Executive Session pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 3, 6, and 7, in Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM 449 Mass. 444 (2007) to discuss 31 Hunting Lane, 41 North Main Street, Igor Lebasky et al. versus the Town of Sherwin. Number 21, MISC PS 000193 (HPS), and 31 Hunting Lane LLC versus Sherwin Board of Appeals, Housing Appeals Committee, number 2021-05, and 41 North Main Street LLC versus Sherwin Board of Appeals, Housing Appeals Committee, number 2021-06. Item number three is Strategy Session Discussion to prepare for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct negotiations with non-union personnel and to obtain legal advice from Town Council pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 2, and 7, in Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM 449 Mass. 444 (2007), the Town Administrator.
Thank you very much, Dan. Particularly thank you for reading the Executive Session, so I don't have to. Can I have any motions or amendments relative to the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as read.
I'm going to all favor Jeff.
Hi.
Mary Ann.
Hi.
I might as well. Okay, new public comment request. Brian Connolly, Brian, I see you there. Please feel free to go ahead.
Right. Thanks, Eric. I just wanted to update the Select Board and the other attendees on the outcome of the bidding that we held for the asbestos removal. And we're awarding, we had two bidders and we're awarding the contract to Bristol Environmental in Billrick, Mass. They came in at $93,240, whereas the other bidder, Omni Environmental, was $139,500. We did do, through CHA, our project manager, did 12 reference checks on Bristol, and they all came back very positively. So the trustees and the LBC approved it on 12/21. Our attorney is preparing the contracts to be signed Monday or Tuesday, and we expect that they will start doing their work on the 17th of January. There is a 10-day period where we have to notify Mass. DEP. So we're very pleased with that outcome. We had estimated that work would be 150,000, and Bristol is coming in, you know, significantly below that, which is good. And then just for the ductwork replacement, the second part of the project, we have gotten some interest from 10 bidders. There is a prebid walkthrough on a week from today, on January 6th. So we'll get a better sense of what bidders will come forward, and we'll be receiving bids on that on June 20th.
Very good.
Any questions?
Did you say June 20th?
I'm sorry, I misspoke. January 20th.
Oh, thank you.
That's very good. Thank you very much, Brian. And as people know, when we combined the two, there actually were no bids on that. So it was necessary to separate the ductwork and the asbestos and progress toward the end. Thank you very much again, Brian. All right, without any further ado, I'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Do I have any motions or questions, modifications relative to the Consent Agenda?
No, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as read by the Assistant Town Administrator.
Okay, so moved.
And I second.
Okay, all favor Jeff.
Hi.
Mary Ann.
Hi.
Okay, second up, consideration of EV charging station fees. Gino Carlucci, the Town Planner, and Michael Lesser from the Energy and Sustainability Committee, which you two want to speak. I think I see you both here.
We're both here. Michael did most of the preparation of the memo that was sent to you, so I will defer to him to review it.
Okay, do you guys, how much did you get to read it, or should I walk through the whole thing, depending on how much time you want to spend on it?
Give highlights to the general public, I think. It's always a good idea, you know.
That's a good idea.
The other details in front of us with the spreadsheets and everything else, I think it's always a good idea, just for the general public to get.
I agree. So the issue with, so now.
You want to share your screen at all, Michael? You're okay?
I'm okay. I mean, I guess I could share the screen and people could start reading the memo while I'm talking.
No, I thought if you had slides.
No, no, no. Wasn't that kind of presentation. Basically, for the town, we have, for those who don't know, we have, based on support from the state, as well as EverSource, and we have two charging stations out front of Town Hall. It's part of the whole move to address climate change. And since the transport sector is one of the biggest contributors to greenhouse gases, it's wonderful for us to be part of, trying to be part of the solution and address the issue of electrifying our cars and the ability to do that. The biggest issue that people have is a problem of where the recharging stations are. So we're part of this whole big program to have more charging stations around so more people feel comfortable converting to electric vehicles. And an important point is that with electric vehicles, even though all of the electricity, only some fraction of the electricity is renewable energy-based at the moment, it's still, it's still better environmentally to do the electric vehicle over a gasoline vehicle, overall, both for climate change issues as well as for a lot of local environmental benefits in terms of pollution that comes from these things, deals with asthma issues and other kinds of things there. And plus, there's also less petrol moved around eventually, and there's other costs to that, too. So we're all part of that sort of wonderful measure here. The issue comes up right now of how to price the services at the charging station, what to charge for the electricity. And so, and whether there's basically a couple of overall approaches. One is to essentially be cost recovering, so that we recover the town's costs for electricity as well as some of the fixed costs. And then there is go all the way down to where you find it at some place where it's free, at some often malls and commercial places where that's often probably intertwined with sort of a marketing venture to get people to go and shop there, and they can park their car for a limited amount of time and get it there. But there's also just the idea of trying to promote electric vehicle use in general by not maybe necessarily by charging less than the full cost. To some extent, this cost, even when we recover our costs, it's still somewhat subsidized or significantly subsidized by the fact that the state grant to put in the charging stations. We had to spend some money for some of the, sort of, I guess it's almost like the civil works around the charging station there. So you can do a range from cost, covering our costs all the way down to how much you want to encourage electric vehicle use. The Energy and Sustainability Committee and its discussions about all this sort of range of options came out with essentially wanting to just cover the town's costs for electricity and its fixed costs related to it. That keeping the cost much lower is not going to really encourage that much more electric vehicle use per se, or that somebody's going to actually go out and buy an electric vehicle because the charging station is a low price. That's, we decided that that was not such a strong incentive for people, and that it's also important for some of us felt that it was important to show that this thing could be financially sustainable as well as environmentally sustainable, and the fact that it could cover its costs for the town. So based on that, the committee, we looked at a range of prices and for the electricity that's costing the town and what the town spent about $4,000 on the station, as well as there's some annual costs for software issues. And we came up, and the price could be anywhere from a mixture of a price per kilowatt hour, could be an hourly rate with a kilowatt hour charge, or even just an hourly rate. We came up with, we would recommend, based on our discussions, that we just charge a flat price of 30 cents per kilowatt hour. It's similar to what might be charged at other places in the area, probably maybe a little bit higher than some. But this will, this is made up of a calculation that the electricity that the town has to pay for is about 25 cents a kilowatt hour, and then we added 5 cents a kilowatt hour to cover the, over time, to cover the costs that the town is incurring, the fixed costs for having the station there. And that this cost can change over time. The software is very flexible there. This is a beginning pricing point there. We could see how use evolves. We have, I mean, Gina could speak more to the use that we've had to date, but we're trying to ramp up the use, and we'll see how it goes over time. It's only been there for a couple, two or three months. And so it's a, I guess, what else to say on that? Yeah, we could see the most important thing maybe to say is that we have flexibility to change the prices quite easily. We can learn how much we encourage, get more use or not. And so we can always be revisiting this. This is a first cut step of just picking a price because to the extent that the town does not want to give the electricity away there as part of supporting electric vehicles, to the extent that this is a price to put in place, and we can revisit this in a number of months, depending on how the use is, and it's easy to change the pricing. And we plan to study how it's being used, because another concern is we don't want people parking the car there beyond the charging time, so that there's idle time there. And to the extent that we see that, we'd also like to probably, another part of our recommendation there is besides a flat price that may be put in a fee per hour that's significant after about four hours, so that if somebody leaves the car there, that maybe there's a $3 or $4 or $5. We weren't quite sure, we weren't quite sure until just recently that the software allowed us to do this, but we would have a sort of a significant hourly rate after about four hours, because most of the use is three hours, three or four hours or less. Really doesn't go that long. But that would be just something to make sure we don't get those kind of people using it when other people might want it. And we could adjust that, too, over time. So at this point, we're suggesting the flat rate with sort of an extra surcharge after about three or four hours. But with the noticing that we will have much more data in some number of months, and we can come back and talk all, talk about it again and see whether we want to make any changes with that.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Michael?
Sure. Mary Ann had her hand up first.
All right, go ahead, Mary Ann.
Yeah, I have a couple of clarifying questions that may be the same as you, Jeff. First of all, your experience so far, you say the average use time, the average charging time was about one and a half hours. I expect the different brands of electric cars have very different charging times. So I think the three or four hour limit is reasonable. Let me ask you, though, what has been the pattern of use so far? I'm impressed by how many cars have used it, but were these town employees? I ask because people are no longer coming to meetings at Town Hall very often. So are they parking their car there and taking a walk just to get it charged? Or do you have any sense of what the use is? That's the first thing. The second is a simple question. How, what's the mechanism of collecting fees? How does that work?
Okay, Gino, do you want to talk to us?
Yeah, so I can address that. First of all, we've had 26 unique drivers use the facility, and there've been a little over 100 session, charging sessions in the first since October, since it went live. I just, really just yesterday, found how to look at the individual charging sessions, and it doesn't have identifying information, but it does have zip code. And overwhelmingly, the people using it have a Sherwin zip code. Though, we had, we had people from Arlington, from Orange County, California, and Vermont among those. I plan to do a more detailed look at, you know, who's using it, but that was my initial observations.
Do you expect it'll be neighbors who live very close? I mean, it would be a very convenient place to charge your car if you live next to Town Hall.
Yeah, it probably, it could be, that would be the most convenient, but otherwise, people, once the library, you know, is fully operating, people can, or people come in and do business. Some of the sessions, while the average is an hour and a half, about 75% have been two hours or less. But they've been as little as five or 10 minutes, some of the sessions, and some, you know, very few have gone beyond, you know, three or four hours, only a handful.
Yeah, so we'll see how it plays out once Town Hall is open and then get back to normal. It could be, yeah.
It'll be interesting to see if it gets to be, Town Hall's more open, there's a little more demand to using it, whether we want to limit it to three hours or something, so people, or, so there's things to play around with as we see whether there's congestion, so to speak, in the sense that people aren't, want to use it and it's not available, even though there's two.
If you don't know the exact identities, how do people get charged? How do you expect you'll be able to do?
Oh, yes. Charge, part of the software that's provided by ChargePoint, the company that manufactures the station, they actually do the collection. People can use a credit card, or they can have a ChargePoint account, and it goes to them, and then they transmit it back to us and with a small fee, you know, for their service.
Oh, that's great. Credit card on the, on the, on the spot.
Yes.
That's good.
Jeff, do you have a question?
Well, two. So we actually only have one charging station right now, isn't that correct? Or we're supposed to get the second one?
One, one station, two ports.
Oh, we have two ports now? I thought, wasn't originally one port was going to be a higher voltage than the other one?
No, the second station, which we still have not gotten, you know, a decision on, that's the level three station. That'll only have one port.
Yeah, that's what I was asking about. So we have one, this first station with two ports, and then we would get possibly get a second station with only one port.
Correct.
But a higher throughput because it's a higher voltage.
Yes.
Our average. Okay. That is kind of my question, because, you know, then I wonder if we get that second station, if we have to have a different charging rate for that one versus this one.
Yeah, we will definitely have to have a much.
Definitely.
Yeah. Twice, for example, the Tesla stations, whereas we're talking about, they're about closer to 60 cents, the equivalent of about 60 cents.
Yeah, but they charge it in 50 minutes or whatever it is.
No, you pay a premium, but yeah, so there's going to be, there'll be a whole set of calculations for that.
Okay.
I see. I have a question from the public. You guys all set? If I take the question from public here?
Sean has a question.
Yep, that's what I'm saying. So you guys, okay, okay, Sean, go ahead.
I was just going to point out that we actually set the site up, and I was told by the contractors to put it in. We could put up to four stations on that, the power unit that's there. And there's room for it, obviously, on the site. We'd be taking more spaces, but it's laid out to be able to allow to do that. And there's enough power coming to it, I believe.
That's right.
Which would be eight spaces, I think. Almost maybe one of the high-power ones takes up a whole.
Yeah, I think it's important to point out that by getting the station that we have, it triggered EverSource to provide the infrastructure to, and that's a significant cost. That was like a $50,000, $60,000 installation to put that power station there. And if it does have capability, as Sean said, for additional stations, including the higher level one.
It'd be interesting to see, as, you know, we turn, as society transitions to more and more electric cars. I don't know if you could justify eight right now, but, you know, you go from whatever, two to three to four and so on like that, to have that expandability, you know?
Yeah, no, it'll be nice to see what the level of use is over the, over the next whatever, three, six, in one year.
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't know what the numbers are, maybe Sean knows. It feels like there's more parking in Town Hall, maybe because, you know, COVID people aren't there as much, but, you know, those new angled, angled spots and so on. It feels like there's more than there was, certainly. I mean, I like this. I support this. I think 30 cents is great. It's comparable to other places. A touch on the high end. It doesn't put any burden on the taxpayer. It covers our costs there. It seems like a reasonable price, what's being done, and yeah, I think this is a no-brainer to me. I don't know if anyone else has any questions or concerns about this. So I guess what you need from us, is it a simply a vote, just simply approve this proposal?
Yeah, I think you need to vote that you're the one who would set the right price. The committee doesn't have that clout, or you can assign it to us. If you want to, you could, you could vote for this price, and then you could decide whether you want to give the committee the right to determine the prices going forward or just keep it that we just meet occasionally and we try to sort something out together. I'm not necessarily advocating that the committee does it, but at this point, it's in your bailiwick to do this kind of price setting.
Any thoughts from the board?
Well, yeah, I'm wondering how the finances work, because we'll actually make 5 cents a kilowatt hour on this, what you're saying, ballpark. We'll, I mean, will we, will we have some, have to set up an account within the town to handle this, or no?
I don't know. We hadn't thought about that, whether, I was assuming we'd just go into the general, general fund.
I don't know. We may.
But rather than to.
We may want to just track it. I don't know where it would fall under the Select Board or maybe under Town Buildings. But anyway, you know, if we're paying them 25 cents a kilowatt hour.
We're not paying them. It just shows up on the electricity bill. It's a particular bill that's under Town Hall. And the pricing is going to fluctuate as you could, I mean, the table, one is, there's a lot of lines there. I didn't have time to simplify it, but depending on the use, the price per kilowatt hour is going to vary a lot. And so making a one, so that's what our job would be to just monitor that. But generally, if I understand it right, it's a separate bill that is paid. Diane can even answer that one, possibly, if that's just paid under the town by the Select Board Office.
It's going to have a revenue line. It'll have a revenue line now, too.
Well, that'll come, right. There'll be a revenue line from Charge, I guess ChargePoint will be sending something.
Yeah, that won't be a problem. We can just set up a separate revenue line for that and keep track of where the revenues come in.
Yeah, and that's what'll be good for us, and we'll keep track with you, Deb, about how it is.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll let you know, but, you know, when it comes in and that kind of stuff, so that's not a problem.
And it'll be under the Town Buildings department or in the budget?
That's where all the other electric bills are paid at, or so I would assume we could keep it there.
Yeah, we could do that. We can make it a separate, a separate line item if you wanted us to do that as well. I mean, you know.
I'm not advocating one thing or the other. I'm just trying to understand. That's all.
Yeah, no, yeah.
It's just a matter of keeping track of how we're doing.
No, I would agree. It would be nice to have it as a separate line that we could easily just see it.
We definitely, we definitely can do that. I'll work with Diane and Jeannie, and we'll set up a separate account line, and then that way, we're all set to go, and we don't have to do any research, you know, retroactively if we want to find out what's going on.
The costs are just a specific account bill, so that's easy for us to see. The other, what you're talking about, if we're making more, is that the town spent $4,000. It's going to have, it's going to be bills of, let's say, $500 a year for some software maintenance and upgrades. You're just about to just figure out where you want that charge to, or that could be charged against the revenue line. Depends how much you want to mix revenue and expense line items or not.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know Jeff said that, you know, we're making 5 cents, but isn't that 5 cents the fixed cost that you're just talking about, the software?
Yeah, it's just, it's just to cover, it's just trying to cover the $4,000 as I put in Table 2. I just was making up a scenario where you could see that that $4,000, if you recovered it over five or 10 years, and how many charges you're going to get, and things like that, that I reduced it to a kilowatt hour charge. It could have been a per-hour charge. So it's, so right, there'll be just a little bit revenue coming in, but it's already a cost that we've incurred and will incur. It's just a matter of where you want to put the $500 fee, whatever it is each year.
Well, I'm certainly fine with the 30 cents that I'm seeing here. There's no question about that. I guess there's two other questions. There's one, does the board want to consider setting any kind of hourly, like a ding fee? You know, I mean, someone has it hooked up for three or four hours, you're dealing with a few bucks an hour? Or do you want to hold off enough for now, wait till what they, if you get from metrics after putting this out for a while?
I'd like to have more information, more data on what the usage patterns are.
She just said very few were hooked up more than three hours, so it doesn't sound like it's probably an issue.
Yeah. Is a good starting point, yeah.
I can't remember. Do you know, how many times did they go more than four hours? I can't remember what was very much.
Like maybe 10 or 15.
Well, that's not.
It, you know, it was that, it was, most of them were just daily more than that, you know, some were.
And they were still charging, or was it idle time or just charging time?
I don't remember. I don't know offhand.
Well, then we could come back to you even in another month or so, if we feel like that, that people are parking there for a long time and just ask you for, ask you for an hourly rate add-on, so we can, we can be flexible for now.
Any other thoughts from the board?
I would just suggest 30 cents a kilowatt hour seems reasonable for now, but in the future, as electricity prices fluctuate, we don't have to, want to have to, you know, re-debate it every time. So I would be in favor of giving the Energy and Sustainability Committee a bit of leeway on adjusting the price within, within a certain range. We can deal with that later.
Yeah, maybe next time to come before, so we could talk about it. We could give like, kind of broad guidelines such as, you know, keep it 5 cents above the whatever rate that we pay and adjust it no more than quarterly or something like that, as people know, or in some kind of like, just broad sense and give them discretion as to setting the rate.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, want to talk about that next time to come? Into that. Okay.
But so should we make a motion to, make a motion to approve the charging of electric vehicles of 30 cents a kilowatt hour?
Sounds good. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
And I might as well. Well, thank you very much, Gino and Michael. Like I said, I think next time you come, I also, I also like the Select Board members here for the vote, but I support delegating this, you know, to your group as well, with just some kind of broad guidelines.
Thank you. No, it's exciting to see, see if we can get the use promoted and get it, get more people doing it. So, okay, thanks for your time.
And thank you for all your work on this.
Yeah.
Much appreciated.
Well, it's a pleasure. Okay.
Okay, all Gino's still here. Keep the camera on, because we have agenda item number three, consideration of acceptance of complete street grant round two, Gino Carlucci, Town Planner.
Well, as you know, the first complete street grant partially funded the North Main Street sidewalk on the east side as well as the connection to the rail trail off Whitney Street and some speed feedback signs. So the, the second grant we applied for, we focused on, and the projects come from the prioritization plan that was prepared a couple of years earlier. The next priority was the sidewalk on Sawland Street, as well as, it's really two projects. It's the sidewalk on Sawland Street, and then it's adding handicap ramps on. as well as, it's really two projects, it's the sidewalk on Sawland Street and then it's adding handicap ramps on the corners of the intersection of, wait, did I say Sawland and Sanger, Sanger? Like everybody else, I guess, I say the wrong, the wrong one sometimes. Um, but so to put the handicap ramps on the, at the intersection of Sawland and South Main and Sanger. Um, so that, that's essentially what it would cover, and, uh, if I could share my screen briefly.
Yeah, go ahead, Gina.
Give a, an illustration of it.
You're good.
So, do you, do you see the, the aerial photograph?
Yep.
Okay, so, already in place are the side, the walkways from, uh, Town Hall uh, uh, in front of the library and behind the library out to Sanger Street. So the sidewalk would connect both of those, go down to the intersection with a crosswalk and then continue across the, uh, the tip of the, the peninsula there to the, to the pedestrian activated crosswalk. And then as part of, uh, the Dunkin' Donuts project, there's the commitment, uh, to build a sidewalk in front of Pilgrim Church that would, uh, be parallel to the street up to about this point and then curve and connect to a crosswalk that goes to the, the, the new walkway that will be in front of Dunkin' Donuts and then be ready for future extension, uh, north to, um, to Village Way, hopefully, that's a lot, much far away project, but, um, thinking in the future, that's, that's the way we'd be creating a nice connection. And by the way, also adding a short connection to the, on the other side of the island in front of Pilgrim Church and then a crosswalk connects to the existing crosswalk on South Main and then it, and then to, to Farm Road. So this link really pulls together, um, a lot of pedestrian, uh, ways, so that, that's, uh, kind of exciting. And, um, so that's basically it, we, we were fortunate to get this grant and, uh, Sean has been, um, working on, uh, surveying, getting the surveys done for this as well as, uh, engineering design, uh, he might want to say something about that, the status of that, and um, other than that, we just asked that you vote to accept the grant.
I would say globally, I think this looks great, the walkability to library, to the, um, to Sitco Station, those are all, you know, centers of the town. And even potentially, you know, via the existing sidewalk on the, uh, on the west side of twenty-seven to the, all the housing units on there, to the library. Um, I, I think this is absolutely great. My only question is, this might be a Sean survey question, that little jog that goes across the, uh, corner lot there, that goes across the triangle lot that's owned by the, um, Pilgrim Church. Is that, um, is that on our property? Or do we need like an easement there?
Uh, I think most of it's in the right of way, but I, I don't, we don't have the detailed survey of that yet.
Okay.
So any changes? We, we might, we might trigger that, where he has the line is actually, is a little bit, hopefully not exactly where we'll, we'll cross, but.
Yeah, that's just conceptual.
The church has a beautiful area in there, we, we're, we're hoping to maintain most of it. Um, it, it's a really nice area, it's just not ADA accessible, as you know.
Yeah.
Um, so some improvements will be made, I mean, South Main Street has a pretty good right of way, but.
No, I think this looks great, I think only people are gonna complain of the, uh, the trailers and longer vehicles that like to simply, you know, kill the grass and park on the side of the lawn there, which is now gonna be a sidewalk. Make sure that has a seven-inch granite curb.
This, this is really great to see, Gino and Sean, thank you so much, you know, we discussed this in planning board a number of years ago and over and over, bringing it up, the need for this sort of a walkway and here it is, and it's really great, perfect.
Is this gonna be between us or concrete? That's always a question I ask whenever I see a sidewalk. John's used to it.
Cut it. I'm ninety percent sure the engineer's estimates were concrete, because everything around it's concrete.
Okay.
The, the cost estimate was based on concrete.
Thank you.
Um, and yeah, I see, oh, there's Frank Hess, yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, I, that little piece that crosses, um, there's some nice cobblestones there, but they, they won't do it for a wheelchair, would that be changed?
Uh, that, that's, that's part of the design, we, we have to figure that out, right?
I doubt there are a lot of cobblestones, you need the smoothest cobblestones to really be ADA compliant, if, if at all.
Okay, thank you.
Now, my understanding, Gino, is that, um, complete streets, I thought we pay for all the design work and then the complete street grant actually pays for the construction, is that correct?
Yes.
So is this currently in Sean's, or Town Building's budget or the DPW budget for the design work? Or would that be something that will be included in the town meeting this spring?
It, I believe, he can speak, but I believe it is in his budget already.
The current budget year?
Yes.
Okay.
We are working on the final details of a contract with Green for the, for the final survey.
Good.
And that design, and that design work.
Okay.
That should be out next week, so, and that's within the DPW budget.
Great, thanks.
Um, that's some other detailed questions, I don't think anything's too important. I'll just ask this one, you think it'll be a standalone bid, or is this gonna be, can you do this under some kind of unit price contract?
This, was that for me or Gino?
I gu, I guess you.
Hopefully for you, Sean.
All of the complete streets projects Eric have to go out as prequal um, mastod project, so they're, they're, they're public bid, this will be in it, um, this will go through that method, it's, it's, it's a little bit small for that prequal for, process, but it has to.
I, I know, I know, it has to be prequal, but, um, the two we did at Framingham, you actually used a unit bid pro, uh, project, they were prequalled. I'll, I'll go in more details later, but I, I guess you have, you, the town party doesn't do enough work to get a unit price contract, it probably has to be standalone bid, I'm guessing.
No, I apologize, we can do unit price, we did do unit price on the other stuff. It was, it was publicly bid, but, uh, Green had set it up as unit price.
Okay, okay, very good. All right, anything else is obviously great, the project's great, getting money for it is great. Uh, I guess what do you need from us? Just to vote to approve to move ahead?
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions or motions, uh, for this, uh, for this project?
No, I, I would just, we need, we need to make a motion to accept the grant, I believe, so I would make a motion that we accept the complete streets grant for the sidewalk and, uh, walkways on Sanger Street and down to, uh, South Main Street.
Okay, do you also want, do you need a motion, any part of that motion, just the authorization, the contract for this, or just really accept the grant? I guess a question for Gina, maybe.
Uh, well, I, I, I thought it was just to accept the grant, but while you're at it, maybe you should, uh, authorize the contract to, well, authorize preparing, going out to bid or, you know, whatever the normal process is.
Yeah, wouldn't upset him out of the, of the grant.
Yeah.
Jeff, would you accept as a friendly?
Yeah, that's a friendly amendment, so I would, uh, amend it to include going out to bid and contracting, uh, in accordance with the, a grant amount.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
I am as well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is a great agenda so far, it's win-win, I think, all grant money. You know, it's gotta come by more often. Okay, I'm gonna read this next one, I'm gonna do it in two parts, so it kind of is like two almost unrelated items. Uh, Jen, I'm number four is consideration appointments and consideration Eagle Scout proclamation, and the first read the appointments and then we'll make, uh, motions and questions and votes relative to that, and then I'll read the proclamation. To the Agricultural Commission, uh, Richard Robinson, uh, from an associate member to a full voting member to expire on, uh, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. I was looking at disabled taxation, um, Melissa Bowman for term to expire on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And Sherburne Cultural Council for Kathy Hargan for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, do I have any questions or motions relative to those, um, three nominations for those committees?
Well, I move that we approve, uh, all three of those nominations and, uh, I would ask if any of the, uh, if any of the candidates would like to make a statement, you're welcome, but we did read your statement in our packet and uh, it's great that you're volunteering for these positions, it's terrific, so.
And usually I take the statements if there's more than one person, if it's just, you know, one person going in, if there's a specific thing. But I mean, if, if someone wants to make a statement, I can always give a couple minutes to it.
Okay, we don't need statements, we have, we've read your qualifications and I think it's all appropriate and I move that we approve all three.
And I, I would second the motion.
All right, uh, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Marian?
Hi.
And I am I as well, thank you very much, obviously, I always love all the volunteers. The second part of this agenda item is an Eagle Scout proclamation for Owen Weinmeyer, did I say it correctly?
We, Weimeyer, Owen Weimeyer.
Weimeyer.
Jeff, this is more your, uh, your kind of, uh, bailiwick. I haven't, I haven't been involved in a Boy Scout since nineteen eighty-eight, the Sherburne Boy Scouts.
He's a, he's a great, he's a, he's an Eagle Scout, uh, as this notes, and he's also, he's been working at Farm Pond, uh, this past summer also. He's a great guy.
I was in the Boy Scouts so long ago, I actually predate, um, my Kikum by one year.
Oh, wow. That's because you were with Brian Kikum, I would guess.
Jeff, can you tell us what his Eagle Scout project was?
Oh, I knew you'd ask me, I can't remember right now, I should know that.
Oh, sorry.
I honestly can't remember, he's a big runner though, cross-country runner, so I think what it was, was, you know, they have those trails at, uh, high school where they, um, have the cross-country running trails.
Right.
And I, I believe he put signs, because there's been instances where maybe we didn't really want signs because all the home team knew where to run and for the visiting teams didn't, but I think it was a courtesy, I think he, I think he put, um, detailed signs for the cross-country, um, turns and, 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 and trails at the high school, I believe.
Very good.
Great guy.
Uh, Jeff, not to put you further on the spot, but do you want to read the proclamation, or do you want me to read it for the?
I don't have it in front of me, if you have it, go ahead.
Okay, sure. And please help me with the name one more time before I have to read it right now?
Or, Orin Weimeyer.
Orin Weimeyer, okay.
Oh, his brother just graduated last year too, from high school.
Whereas Orin Weimeyer has earned the rank of Eagle Scout and whereas this accomplishment symbolizes his creative examples of service, strong leadership and organizational skills, which have made a difference in our community. And whereas Orin has demonstrated his ability to set a goal and exhibited a personal desire and tenacity to follow through successfully. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Sherburne, on behalf of all of its citizens, extend their congratulations and best wishes on this occasion of the Eagle Scouts Award Ceremony. In witness thereof, we have caused a seal of town to be affixed as proclamation on the thirtieth day of December near two thousand and twenty-one. And I signed it today, I was the last signature, so everyone has signed it.
Just add, uh, one note, uh, you know, because all these Eagle projects benefit the town, we, we will on January ninth have our Eagle Court of Honor for eight Eagle Scouts. Now, it's more than a normal year, because it's accumulated during the COVID period of time and the boys wanted to wait so they could do a ceremony, it's gonna be a hybrid ceremony, but, uh, anyway, we have eight of them.
Excellent, wow, that's pretty good.
Will that be posted, Jeff, so people can listen in?
Yeah, I believe so, I have to confirm that, and it'll be in the newspaper, I believe, also in the, um, Dover Sherburne Press and, um, Town Weekly, the weekly, uh, newspaper.
Okay, very good. Okay, without any further on discussion on that, I'd like to move on to agenda item number five. As a consideration, tell me in warrant articles, and I think in our background material, everyone has the kind of the updated checklist, um, Diane did a great job pulling that together, I think Diane and Jeannie pulled it all together. Um, obviously it's probably not fair to do a detailed discussion or throw anything out right away or make any hard decisions like that with three, only three of the five members uh, present at this meeting. But it'd be interesting to know if anyone has any concerns or anything that they think would be levied up to discussions that, you know, we can vet now before, um, we meet in two weeks, I suspect it'll be a heavier meeting focused on this with the full five, five members present. Is there anything that's on the checklist that anyone has any concerns about?
Well, I think one thing we'll have to do is maybe provide, uh, uh, because this is really just the title for the article, it's not really the full write-up. But the ones where we're, for example, I think the Board of Assessors is going from pointed, elected to appointed. So, yeah, those can be sometimes contentious at town meetings, so we probably need to make sure that the language is, um, properly, um, vetted and complete enough that citizens who aren't as closely involved can make an informed decision.
All right, there are several that I think are gonna require some, uh, some information spreading, I should say, to, uh, people in the town, so people can understand what they are when they come to town meeting. Yeah.
Is Gina still here?
What did you say?
Uh, Gina was looking for him, do you remember, so the floodplain district, why doesn't Paul DeRensis, why did we don't defer that, uh, last year, does anyone remember?
Uh, I think that, um, the state, there was some delay in the, uh, in the adoption of the EPA rules by the state, or it was something upstream from Sherburne that we had to wait on. But I'll let Gina answer it when he comes next time.
Yeah, for some reason, I would, because I've dealt with that a few times in my day job and here, and usually it's an administrative thing, you know, the issue, uh, FEMA issues an updated floodplain map and you just have to vote to adopt it so people can get their insurance, that's really all it is, you know?
Right, yeah, I think the updated floodplain map was yet, not yet, uh, certified or something like that. It was some administrative, uh, step that had to take place first.
Okay, all right, um.
Do we have any, uh, knowledge of any citizens petitions that are coming around?
I don't think so, Diane can answer that.
I, I haven't seen, I haven't seen any come in, nothing's been brought to my attention that came in, yeah.
And today was a deadline to have like a town review on it, which we'll talk about, we'll do that again this, next year, yeah. And some of these, I mean, like, some of these, I don't know, I think, well, as I wait to more people here. I think it needs further discussion maybe with the sponsors.
All right, some of these I definitely like more information on, but, oh, I think we should wait. Uh, our next meeting is not until January thirteen.
Thirteen, thirteen.
That's after the closing of the warrant.
Yes.
So, um, you know, I don't think we have enough information on a lot of these, but they, none of them look like, uh, all of them need more information, but they don't need more information necessarily to have a placeholder on the warrant, so.
Does anyone know, uh, personal committee, are there any meeting before the warrant closes to discuss any of these? I'd almost like to sit in that meeting. I guess like, for, for personal committee.
Vicky's here. Yes, we will. Sorry, this is Vicky, yeah, we will.
Okay.
Probably within the next two weeks, because it's going to be, you have to dis, we have to, uh, work with the chief police to approve his new requisition for his position, so it will be within the next two weeks.
Okay.
Actually, I do have a question that I'd like to have clarified, on the very last article in the, uh, list, it's, um, oh, it's us, the Select Board to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to release the town's right title and interest, if any there be, in and to a portion of Obed Lane lying on the north side of Lake Street and showing as burdening Lot One and blah, blah, blah. Um, Obed Lane is on the south side of Lake Street and as far as I can see on the assessors map, there's no portion of Obed Lane on the north side of Lake Street, so I'm wondering if that's a a mistake, or is there something I don't know about?
So is that actually, is that actually about, when it says a portion of Obed Lane, that's the public right of way, it's not town property on there, we're looking to release for whatever reason? That's an actual portion of the public right of way that we're looking to, uh, basically, what do you call it, um, unaccept? Yeah, raising your finger, I'm gonna teach all of you to raise your little hands here, but yes.
Yeah.
How to raise my hand?
I'll, I'll just leave my hand up.
Under reactions, if you want to raise your hand, it's under reactions.
Yeah, under reactions.
I heard from Jeannie, then I'll take Mary Ann's question.
Right, um, what it is, is that they're, Obed Lane, um, you, everybody knows where Obed Lane is, and it continues across the street onto somebody's private property. And at one point, probably many years ago, it was used as a fire road. But now it goes nowhere, um, and so, uh, the homeowner would like it re, the, the easement to go away because there's really no need for it anymore, so that's why she's, she, they asked for the town to release the easement.
Oh, interesting, who knew there was Obed Lane extension to the north side of Lake Street?
Right.
Is there actually a physical lane or?
Obed Lane, uh, no, Obed Lane comes Obed Lane, no, Obed Lane comes, it, it opens off into Lake Street. Um, and then the, um, the easement goes across the street onto, I think it's 23 Lake.
Right, my question is, is the easement, as of today, a recognizable? Uh, cart road or something that starts?
No, you would never know that it was a car path or anything.
Okay, all right, so that makes sense.
I, I apologize, I cannot also not find the raise hand feature, this is Wendy Alasi, Director of Assessing. And Jeannie and I have had a lot of conversations about this particular property. Um, it is, Marion, it's like a cart path, um, from years and years and years ago. Um. And that's essentially. Um, what it is, it's, it's, you know, there's, there's no real documented, um. You know, anything.
Out on your Assessors map, is any kind of?
No, 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 sort of an easement, it's just an old cart path that at one point they needed, and. So.
Okay.
And I'll talk to council about it, just, I'm, I'm just curious, like, if it, you know, it's a release of, of some kind of title, right, the property, you don't property a fee or an easement usually, and something like that. So is it a form of right of way that's actually defined by an easement? And if actually you relinquish that easement, it probably just reverts to the underlying fee. If it's an actual property outright owned by the town or somehow it's a right of way, then I just, I don't know if you, once you release it, if it has to then go to some kind of, um, auction or not, you know, I mean. Otherwise it doesn't return to the underlying, it might return to the previous owner, um, wherever that property is, I'm not sure, I've dealt with this a few times. In my day job, that's why I'm very curious about it, of what it actually is. Is it a right of way, is it not a right of way, is it a right of way defined by an easement, you know what I mean, so it's something, otherwise it wouldn't need town meeting approval, if it's just like a dirt road, you know what I mean? So I'll be curious, I'll, I'll talk to council, um, offline and figure out more details of it before it comes in. Because if you are reverting a right of way. Then this whole implication is on the chapter 82, it's actually a very prescribed process to it. And it has to, like, think, like, you know, be approved by town meeting, go pull the select board twice, have an opinion by the planning board as well. Um, all right, that's it.
You know that they've talked to Gino, um. About this, so they're kind of pulling everything together.
Okay.
Okay, in the end, it would be good to have language that, uh, in the warrant, uh, that kind of conveys. Clearly what's to be done, uh, this was sort of inscrutable the way it was written.
Well, I think, I think what it is, Marion, is this is a checklist, it's not like the full wording. Of the articles, it keeps it a little short, that this is what they are, and, um, we'll get more. We'll get more, you know, definite wording as we get closer to the warrant being done.
Yeah, I understand, Jeannie, that's, that's correct, thanks.
Yeah. And as, um, this council and I have done like 30 street acquisitions together, I think it's a similar process. All right, um, any other questions about anything that, you know, could help just kind of shake out before we meet with the full group on the 13th?
I will, um, real quick, capital budgets meeting Tuesday night. Be Zoom, if anybody wants to.
Okay.
Be on that.
Uh, Eric, all this said, uh, before January 10th, it, it is still possible to add another Warner article, is that correct?
Yep. Definitely.
Yeah.
This gets basically proposed, um, to the Select Board and the Clerk's office, depending on what, when, whatever group they have to go in front of, or which one to sponsor and ultimately be accepted by the clerk. That's how the deadline works, it's by, what is it, the, the 10th, at, actually.
Right.
All right, sounds like we've gotten at least a good start on that, a little separate there. Okay, um, agenda number six, uh, any routine business, any select board or, uh, Assistant Town Administrator reports?
I don't have anything for you tonight, Eric, it's been a quiet couple of weeks with the holidays.
Very nice. I like these, um, meetings, we can just clean up, um, stuff like this, uh, no select board reports? Okay, well, thank you all for the attendance, uh, without further ado. As Chair, I deem that it's, uh, executive session is warranted for the agenda items as previously read to the record by Assistant Town Administrator. Um, and I move that we enter executive session, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
And I am I as well, thank you all so much.